All the world's a nail, I guess. It's 7:02. Are we live, Belmont Media?
We are live, yes.
Okay, given that it's 7:02 and we all seem to be here, I think we should get started. I am Roy Epstein, Chair of the Belmont Select Board. This is a joint meeting of the Select Board, the School Committee, the Warrant Committee, and the Comprehensive Capital Budget Committee. We're calling it Budget Summit III, where the subject matter is a presentation of no override budget scenarios for this five and with some discussion, actually. This will be presentations by the Town Administrator and also by School Superintendent. And if we, we're going to stop by nine o'clock. And if presentations and the comments or the discussion with the various committees wraps up before nine o'clock, I'll open it up for some public comment. But if you go to the end, then there won't be any public comment because we really need to end by nine o'clock. So with that, I would like to call the meeting to order now. It's 7:03 PM on December 20th, 2023. Select Board, I'm here, my colleagues, Elizabeth DeHonor here, Mark Palello. Town Administrator Patrice Garben, Assistant Town Administrator Jennifer Hewitt.
Budget Analyst.
Budget Analyst.
Matt Haskell, Budget Analyst. Wasn't sure of his title. And with that, the School Committee could call themselves to order and then we'll go.
Thanks, Roy. I'll call the School Committee to order at 7:04. The School Committee could just do a roll call because we do have one member who is remote this evening. I'd appreciate it.
Amy Checkway here.
Jamal Say here.
Dong Yue here.
Amy Zuccarello here.
Jeff Liberty here.
Thanks, and Meg Moriarty here. And we are joined by Superintendent Geiser, Assistant Super Lucia Sullivan, and Tony Decaldero, our Director of Operations.
Okay, thank you. Next is Warrant Committee, Jeff.
Thank you, Roy, Jeff Luby, Chair of the Warrant Committee. We'll do roll call vote. I am attending via online. Apologize for that. I guess in the room, we'll start with you, Tom.
Tom Cumino, Warrant Committee Member.
Bill Anderson, Warrant Committee Member.
Jack Weiss.
Fitzcoughing.
Melissa Morley.
Susan Croy.
Bree Warner.
Matt Taylor.
Paul Richter.
And who else do we have online?
Colin Gekker.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, I saw Anne Helgen, who's not been promoted to a panelist. She was in the participants.
I will promote her. Thank you.
Just for the record, Roy Epstein is also here as a member of the Warrant Committee.
Meg Moriarty.
Thank you.
Okay, I am here. It's Anne Helgen.
All right, greetings, Anne. Then we can move on to the Comprehensive Capital Budget Committee.
Hi, Chris Doyle, calling the Comprehensive Capital Budget Committee to order. I think we have a forum, but I'm not positive. Maybe, and I can't see who's online, so maybe folks can. This is kind of hard to figure out. I'll totally call themselves out. I'm really happy. I appreciate it.
Dong Yue.
Mark Palolo.
Mark Palolo. Yes, Aaron Pickelingus.
Chris Doyle. Do we have fifth person? Susan is online. Susan is online.
Yep, Susan Burgess-Cox.
Is there anybody else, Susan, online?
I don't see anybody.
You don't see anybody, no.
No, no, they're not. Thank you for showing me that. Yeah, so we lived across the finish line with the board.
Okay, very good. With that, then I guess we should start with you, Patrice.
Okay, so Patrice will present a no override budget plan for the Town side. Okay, this is online. Oh, sorry, it's Patrice Garben, Town Administrator, online, the presentation. First, I want to thank Matt and Jennifer for assisting in this no override budget scenario. Tonight, I will present my recommended no override budget, which we'll be discussing at their January 8th meeting. I wanted to say that these recommendations come from my six years of having worked with and understanding the co-functions of the Town Department. Also, in my 10-plus years as a Town Administrator, understanding what can happen when cuts are made too broadly. What you'll see tonight are reductions that are deliberate and with great thought as to what the impact would be from an operational perspective. And then from the Town's, the Town's point of view, creating a no override budget is difficult. Creating a no override budget now with an already low-level service budget means we are cutting into the loan of Town services. With that, I will share. So we're going to start with free cash. As you know, free cash is certified every year. The chart on the screen shows the free cash amounts that have been certified since 2022, the use of that free cash within the fiscal year, and then the carryforward year-over-year. In FY '25, you will see that the starting point is $11.8 million. And the $2.4 million and the $552,000 for OPEC and operating budget, that's reflected of a $3 million total of free cash that we're using in the operating budget. We have no transfers for general stabilization, but we do have $107,000 this year of free cash that is dedicated to the opioid settlements. That will be, has to be transferred to the opioid fund. We can only use that for opioid-funded programs. We also have $1.5 million as a set aside for capital. We're looking at the generators, the boot, and the boilers need to be replaced. And then the $3.1 million you see here is the override offset, which we are proposing to use in the event of an override, to offset the override over the next three years, and in the no override scenario, what we'll be using as well. And then that also has a carryforward of $4.1 million, which is per our fiscal policy, to set aside 3% to 5% of free cash aside. Looking at a no override option, the funding available for a no override budget, we'll be using the base tax revenue adjusted for Prop 2.5, along with the estimated receipts and local aid that we are estimating. We have dedicated remaining free cash for FY '25 at $3.1 million, the number I referenced before. And in FY '26, we are putting aside $1.5 million into that no override budget scenario. Then we fund the shared service items. This is, as you know, debt service, pension, benefits, insurance, facilities, and the utilities in the town. We have removed our proposed investments in the override. That's the additional capital funding that I've recommended for sidewalks, and also the project manager in the Facilities Department. So once we do all that, we have remaining funds available for the municipal and school services. So looking at the FY '25 no override, the Town and the schools have budgeted to that number in the second column. The Town is budgeting to $32.5 million, and the schools are budgeting $63.5 million. Our budgets tonight will reflect those numbers. And from the 11:30 summit, which was the override summit, override budget summit, $800,000 that the Town would have to reduce from that number, and the schools, the $2.2 million. And then we did a similar exercise for FY '26. So for FY '26, we would have to budget to those numbers that are reflected in that chart. So the Town has done considerable amounts since the last override in FY '21, in April of 2021. But after we failed override in April, the Town had reduced the side by 5 FTE. I've said this often in the past. We have, we had eliminated two DPW laborers, police officer, firefighter, and a resident engineer. We are keeping the resident engineer in the no override scenario budget, but we have eliminated positions in other departments. Other efficiencies that we've made, we've looked at replacing the streetlights with LED lights. That has given us a considerable amount of savings over the years. We've looked at revenue enhancements over the years. We have looked to change the way we bill for ambulances, and we have looked at local receipts, such as investment income and how we estimate those local receipts. So that has generated some additional revenue in town. We've right-sized benefits. When Jennifer came on over a year ago, one of the things she did is really dig down into how we were spending for the benefit side, and we were able to see savings in that, in those lines. And finally, we've done a lot of combining of positions. In the Human Resources Office and my office and the town's professors, we've taken jobs through whether or not it was attrition or retirement, and we merge those positions with other positions in those offices. We created efficiencies, and that resulted in savings. In FY '24 to '25, we've done a lot of restructuring, capitalizing on staff transitions and retirements. One of the things that I have done over the years, whenever there is a vacancy in any department, we look at ways that we can either restructure, combine, just to make efficiencies within that department. In community development, you know, we've changed that to planning and building, and we've moved Engineering Department under DPW. In recreation, we are moving programming and also moving a part-time position into the revolving fund, no longer funded by the operating budget, or planning and preparing for the rink and the library that will be opening in 2025. And also with the change in the administration and the Treasurer's Office, we are realigning staff, aligning some of those functions. So we've done a lot over the last few years. So when you're looking to reduce even further, there's only a few places you can. And I figured I needed to set that up as we walk into where we look to and where I'm recommending that we. So on the municipal side, for no override, I want to preface this by saying there's a lot more work that we need to do for FY '26. We're drilling down from FY '25 to numbers, and you'll see numbers reflected there. And the board, as I stated, will be going over that in more detail on January 8th. But for FY '26, there's some studies and some other things we really need to consider because those are going to be really the impact to not only services but lifesaving services. So for trash, we are proposing in FY '25 to charge residents for fees for bulky item pickup, along with mattress recycling. We are proposing in FY '25 to reduce yard waste pickups. Currently, the 23 annual pickups for yard waste, we are proposing to drop that count to 16. Now, given that that number is going to drop, then we have to figure out operationally when those are going to be. That's going to be a considerable impact to the residents. In FY '26, we're looking to further reduce that service, consider a pay-as-you-throw program. And this is going to take a lot of work and research to look into how we would go about doing this. But we feel there's a savings on this pay-as-you-throw. For police and fire, in FY '25, we are going to freeze any vacancies in the fire department, and we're reducing the staff in the fire. We've identified by 2.5 FTEs. In the police department, we're scaling back the purchasing of equipment replacement. And the other thing we're doing with the police department is I'm eliminating the animal control officer in the Health Department. That is going to be absorbed by the police department. I've asked the police chief to come up with a plan and exactly how we're going to be doing that. That is something, another position that we're losing and being absorbed within the police department. Also reducing BEMA funding. BEMA is the Emergency Management Agency that the Town has. We'll be reducing funding on that side as well. And in FY '26, we want to further reduce staff in the fire department by eight FTEs. This is something that, again, we need to research and study. The fire chief, I've asked the fire chief to start conducting a response time study starting January 1st. If we really understand any change in the services of the fire department, what would this impact be on response time within the community? General Government, FY '25, we are planning to consolidate polling locations. Currently, there are seven locations in the Town. We'll be working with the Town Clerks maybe by half. That obviously is going to put some inconvenience in the residents who vote. We plan to fund early voting costs from anticipated state grants, so we're taking that funding out as anticipating state funding for those programs. In my line, I have a diversity, equity, and inclusion funding of about $24,000. That goes to events throughout the community in the year, goes to some training that we have within the staff. I'm going to be eliminating that as well. And then we're also reducing staff by one FTE under General Government. This will be in the Treasurer's Office. In FY '26, we will continue to review opportunities for further efficiencies under General Government. Finally, under Human Services, in FY '25, we are going to, we are proposing to reduce the staff at the Council on Aging and the Health Department by 3.1 FTEs. I'm also recommending that we don't fill the City Senator Director until we have an answer to the override. We plan to reduce expenses to reflect recent spending levels and updated projections. This is the library. The library, we are reducing to MAR. That is the minimum amount that the state allows us to go to, to remain in the Minuteman Library System. And then for FY '26, we plan to further look at the reduction of hours open at the library, which plans to open in the fall of 2025. Again, this is something that needs to be discussed and further reviewed. So to sum up, on the municipal side, overall staff reduction, FY '25, we are proposing six FTEs, along with expenses. That's in Human Services, Public Safety, and General Government. And in FY '26, the FTEs and Public Safety is also a corresponding savings and benefits, which we've also captured. That is the Town side.
Patrice, I have a couple of comments right away, but I'll wait. Okay, that's the Town side. We turn to the School side, and actually, I'd like to recognize Meg Moriarty for a couple of remarks.
Thank you. Thanks, Roy. And thank you, Patrice, for that presentation and for your introduction remarks. So I just wanted to say a few things. The School Committee did preview these budgets last night, and the budget scenarios that you will see tonight. They show really deep cuts to our school system that are quite unsettling. So I want to be really clear that the School Committee and the School Department are not recommending any of these budget scenarios. In fact, I don't think the Select Board or anybody on any committee in Town would actually vote in favor of these cuts. But the reality is that this spring, without an override, these scenarios will have to be implemented. Roy has stated many times that without an override, Belmont won't be the same. As Patrice was saying in her intro, there have been cuts to the Town side. Well, over the years, the schools have made many reductions to programming and to staffing. We've cut librarians, community service coordinators, strings, languages, Metco aides, just to name a few. And so I argue that Belmont will have a really hard time saying that it has an excellent school system anymore if we're actually forced to implement these non-override budget scenarios. You'll see tonight that they're going to impact all families. They'll impact athletes, musicians, performers. We will not be able to improve our special education programming investments that we need to benefit all students, like what we showed the last time with our math and our literacy curriculum, will be impossible. And we will not have the ability to implement any of the advanced coursework for those who are asking for it. But I will say, just speaking for myself, that I'm really hopeful that we will not have to implement any of these cuts that you see tonight. I've always been thankful for the support of the Belmont community, for our schools, and how they value education and our young people. Just a few months ago, we celebrated the opening of the Middle High School that was built thanks to the overwhelming support of our community. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to go over to the Q, and I think it's an important reminder that the School District is still reconfiguring, which was part of the vision. We've heard it from former School Committee members. It was part of the vision that the voter was promised when they voted for that new school. And as current leaders, I believe that we must do what we can to continue to work towards this vision. It was part of the expectation. I'm thankful for the leadership of our Select Board, who have unanimously and publicly stated their support for an override this spring. And I believe the community can pass a successful override so that the budget scenarios that Jill's about to show you will never become a reality. The School Committee is committed to providing the Select Board with an override and a non-override budget on the 25th, so that together we can socialize them to the community and inform the community well in advance of when they have to go to vote in April. With that, I will turn it over to Jill to present the budget scenarios.
Great, thank you. Just to get some words of introduction first, thank you all for just this process, bringing everybody together to talk through these very challenging conversations. Every time I enter into this non-override conversation, I feel it, and I feel it a lot, right? And it's sort of like, it's almost like you don't want to say the words, right? What we would need to do if the override doesn't pass. I will also say, also looking at the sector and Lucia, and Patrice was talking about the reductions, I'm like, as a resident, I feel it even more. So I'm sort of wearing two hats right now, and it's very, it's hard. It's really difficult. The one part that I echo Meg's words about hope, and part of the hope comes from this process and the collaboration that exists in this room among all of us. And I lean on that a lot in terms of getting through this process. So again, echoing Patrice's comments about it cutting into the bones, yes, same thing with schools. This will, in the end, impact our students and families. In the override budget, what I was adding was to move us past some of the reductions that had happened in the past, right? So there, in that override budget, I talked about outdated curriculum. The staffing needs to support students in the areas of intervention and special education. The needed positions to provide systemic support to educators working with students in classrooms. And so this doesn't even begin to account for that. So we're not, we're starting at not even being able to fill the gaps that we are seeing. Mind that these reductions that we see, we see the dollar signs that go with the labels of the reductions. I have to remember that it's not just about decreasing the dollar amount. We are removing resources from classrooms and schools, and that is bringing a decline, a decline of students' learning experiences. And we have to think that when we have these conversations. That said, I'm just going to roll through the first few slides, which you've seen before. Intro, the timeline, which, you can keep clicking through because it's basic, which we know is running through since August. We started the process and now landing in December. The objectives we've seen before, as well as the assumptions on the next slide, and those have guided us through the process. So what we're going to show tonight is we're going to start with the level service that Tony will take us through. You will see some change in our rollover in level service. And then from there, I'll talk about the reductions from our level service.
Thank you, Dr. Geiser. As Dr. Geiser indicated, there's some changes here. We presented the rollover budget, the Budget Summit II at the last meeting. Two lines that have changed there. I'll start first with the line that hasn't changed, like everyone's attention to the third line down, labeled as COLIS increases. There's a change from '24 to '25, an actual decrease of $9,000. We received some questions about that. I want to make clear that reduction represents the fact that we have eliminated the one-time expenses in FY '24, some administrative transitions, and some expenses related to the reconfiguration of grade movement, moving up to the middle school from Cheddar. So that cost is captured there. The two lines on the sheet that have changed since the last Budget Summit are the special education and transportation lines. And we'll go into that detail in a moment. Before we go, I'll just mark the fact that our roll forward budget, we're calling its draft to 66.2 million, almost 66.3 million. That's an increase of $3,376,000 over the FY '24 budget, which is a 5.37% increase. And if we can go to the next slide, this is the detail of what the changes are in the tuition and spread transportation lines. In the middle of the page, there, that bolded line, $202,000, that represents a net change for FY '25 for special education, our district tuitions. That number is the increase from the draft one budget, that was included in the Budget Summit II, the last meeting, to now tonight's meeting, which is in our school draft two FY '25 budget. At a summary level, the way that we're calculating the district tuition expenses for next year, we're starting with this year's cohort, with literal POs, purchase orders that we have on the books, representing those students for our district placements. We've got a monthly snapshot of that, and we compare a recent monthly snapshot, the snapshot we get taken in November, where actually represents a decrease in expected expenses for this year. That's what that negative $260,000 number is. And Dr. Geiser and I met with our special education leadership in the district, and we have identified approximately six students who may have developing needs that at some point during this year could result in some additional replacements. We've identified placeholder tuitions for FY '24 of approximately $75,000 per student. That's a lot of variables. And that results in an estimated cost for expenses, potentially to be incurred this year of another $450,000. Those two numbers net together for a net change of about $189,000 for this year that we would otherwise expect to spend. And when we take that number to increase our base for next year, we would also index that $189,000 projected delta by the index factor we've been using for special education tuitions, which is 7% currently. And that would, some of those $202,000 that we are including as an increase from draft one to draft two for special education on district tuitions for next year. Below that section is our special education transportation, based on, again, the current POs that we have in place now. We're projecting approximately $100,000 deficit in transportation, but transportation expenses for FY '24, included in our quarterly update last night, School Committee. And that's an FY '24 projected cost, and we're indexing that cost by 7% again for next year, $107,000. So the 202 and the 107 gets us the increased amount of about $309,000 for next year. That results in an increase from draft one to the $309,000 against the $60,000. Just to finish off the current piece, if we can go to the next slide, we'll actually pass by the reallocation. There's been no change since the previous Budget Summit, no change in the needed increases since the last summit. To summarize what we've been talking about, using that rule of a number that we just discussed, and the other elements that we, no changes from the last summit. Our level service budget is $66,781,000 plus. That is an increase over the FY '24 budget of $3,894,000 plus, which is a 6% increase FY '24. Matt, I'll turn it back to Superintendent Geiser to discuss the non-override budget scenarios.
So when we are looking at our non-override budget scenarios, we are starting with the level service, and I'll explain a little bit how we're adjusting that in these scenarios. What you're going to see tonight are two scenarios, which I presented to the School Committee last night. We are working off of these two scenarios at the moment. On January 9th, I'm going to bring to the School Committee one scenario that will likely be some kind of hybrid between those two scenarios, and I will note what the differences are with them. And the reason is because it's taken us some time to work through the different elements on the reductions that we identified back in November. So it's just taking us some time to get through that. So I'll start with the first overview. So we have the 63.7 available revenue that we have to stay within. Our level service is 6.7. Here's where we're adjusting that level service. We are part of those needing increases. We're for additional buses to the amount of $304,000 for the, that will be involved with the transition process of the fourth grade going up to the Q. Because our transportation is one of our reductions, we are dropping the level service by that amount for our starting point, simply because if we would add and then decrease anyway, so we're just landing with the starting point with that taken out. anyway, so we're just landing with the starting point with that taken out. So that brings us to a $2.7 million reduction for FY '25. So the two scenarios that I'm going to present are, will involve these tiers of reductions, which is what I used back in November when I initially presented the non-override at that school committee meeting and a public forum. What these will say is, these are the places that we would look for second, third, and so forth. So the first place, in this particular scenario one, the first place we look is professional development and transportation. And then we look to extracurriculars, and then to programs and resources, and then staffing. I'll get us to the summer side more in depth between them. And then scenario two is various, the same tiers minus the extracurriculars. So that's going to be one key difference between the first and the second scenario, which you'll see on the next slide. So what you see here is, I'll read. Just to talk through, just to talk through what these particular reductions are. So in the first tier, you're looking at professional development, transportation, both of which would be reduced in either scenario. Professional development is simply taking out what we have currently in there minus any contractual obligations for programs like mentoring. So in the contract, we have to provide mentorship for teachers, we have to make sure we have the budget for that. And this reduces the other item, the other, the remaining general fund in that particular line item. As you can imagine, once you start chipping away at the professional development, that undermines our ability to provide those professional learning opportunities for our staff, which is very critical to developing the teaching and learning for students in our schools. The transportation, and this is what I was referring before to the $304,000, we would be reducing that to the legal minimum requirement, which is essentially students up through sixth grade who live beyond two miles from the school, and no obligation for grade seven and up. So that would be reducing that amount from the general fund under transportation. The most, probably most significant issue with that is students who rely heavily on transportation to get to school would not have that available to them from the school department. And then another, several other issues that would arise, like more traffic and things like that would certainly be some potential fallout from that as well. Extracurriculars, so this is why they differ between the two scenarios. This is one of the pieces of feedback that we got after we initially presented these different tiers of reductions, just around what exactly that, does that look like with programming? One complicated factor with extracurriculars is that we do have a lot of the programs that depend on fees, and then a chunk of the programming that depend on the general fund. What you see here is just general fund dollars. Generally speaking, those dollars tend to fund more on the athletic side. Half of our athletics program is funded by the general fund, as well as others, clubs and after-school activities, mostly in the middle in the high school. So that is largely what those funds are. It does a little bit in the music side around travel. I think some other like programming pieces, but most of the arts staff are supported by fees as it stands right now. So those are the two, the first tier and the second tier are the ones that are just sort of listed right here, and I'm going to ask you to go to the third slide. So here's where I provide a little more detail around these particular elements that we'd be reducing. In both scenarios, one and two, we would be looking at curriculum purchases. And again, this, and keeping in mind that we would, this is not just reducing curriculum purchases, this is also saying we can't invest in the curriculum that I was asking for in the override scenario. So this is not only not investing, but it's actually taking away even more capacity around having high-quality curriculum in the classroom. Instructional materials and supplies, this one is really important to, to think about because we are essentially reducing the items and supplies and materials that teachers use to deliver instruction in the classroom. And so that, that will really kind of impede their ability to do that at a high level. The other piece with this is our PTOs, PTAs, and FBE currently provide quite a bit of funding for classroom materials. So this would probably put more of a weight on them to do that. And one biggest issue with that is, that doesn't necessarily guarantee that we get the supplies through those funding sources. It would be helpful, but having it in our general fund just means that it's going to be there definitely. Technology, in the very same way as the materials and supplies, again, we are, we would be limiting access to, for teachers to instructional technology to help with teaching and learning. The other piece with this is also reducing the district's ability to, for maintaining and replacing hardware in the tech. We are now starting to talk about staffing. We grouped these in, you'll see these as staffing groups. And this one has staffing under both scenarios. Again, it would be the same reduction that we are looking at. The first one is we labeled as seasonal staff, and essentially this would be, we would be reducing the home tutoring budget. And the reason why we are looking at that as a reduction is that's based on past spending patterns. And the only caveat with that is that if we happen to get more need for home tutoring beyond the budget, then we would be in a challenging position in providing that need. The curriculum work, this is what teachers do in the summer. As you can see, it's a very low amount anyway, we would reduce that. Then we are looking at leadership and administration. We would be reducing our curriculum directors, as well as admin staff from those departments of finance, technology, and HR. With the curriculum directors, this means that teachers have less support on the curriculum side. These directors work with teachers around curriculum implementation, pedagogy, meeting the needs of students. So this limits their time that they can give teachers around those with that support. And then in the, the, those various departments, that you're just looking at reducing the, again, weakening the system that supports teachers to do the work in their classrooms. So that's just something to remember when we look at those types of reductions. Awesome. Now we're in a staffing group B, which is clerical staff. Again, same across those scenarios. The clerical staff with this reduction, this also contributes to the weakening of the system that supports students and staff. The other thing, piece with this particular reduction, as well as other reductions, this kicks into, is that you might reduce the staff, but the workload doesn't reduce, so that workload has to be absorbed by other people, which we, we have a lot of workload as is, so that would only increase what people already have on their plates. And then under support staff, we are looking at reducing kindergarten aides from five days to four, campus monitor position and library aides, and this would reduce support for students, campus monitors who provide supervision for student safety, and then reduce the access to libraries. Here is where the two scenarios diverge. In the first scenario, you will see fewer teachers reduced. That is the scenario where extracurriculars are reduced. And in scenario two, you have more teachers reduced. In that scenario, we are keeping extracurricular funding in place. The big, the biggest piece about reducing the teachers, as soon as you start reducing teachers, you're looking at larger class sizes, limited electives at the secondary level. And then for elementary students, if we, there's a potential to increase the number of students that need to transfer to other schools in order to balance out classes, or there's more room in one school versus the other, that kind of thing. The one piece, so this is where the two scenarios, as I said, they diverge here relative to the extracurricular. In the beginning, I said I would be pulling together one scenario. I'm looking between these two scenarios, and we'll tease out information on extracurriculars to pull together one scenario for the school committee on the ninth. But this, this is essentially what we're working with at this point. So one of the things I just want to point out, and this is kind of a visual I provided to give a picture of when we are talking about these reductions, again, this is not just about like lowering, reducing, or decreasing the budget amount, but this is what we're looking at, at impact. It's pulling, it's pulling away from the supports for students, the core academics, it's pulling away at the systems of operations and safety, and it's limiting access to programs. So that's when I talked about the transportation is an access question, the extracurriculars is an access question, and same thing with the libraries, when you're reducing the amount of time that the libraries are open. So this is just something to kind of make sure we, we understand like what that, what these reductions, how that impacts. On the next one, same idea, but you're just sort of seeing how each one is sort of plugged in in one of these categories. There is overlap between them, so you know, these, they can impact multiple categories, but this is mostly where they would fall. So for FY '26, we have, I'm going to be expressing an approach of how we would be looking at this. Once we have identified our FY '21 reductions, we'll more, be able to more clearly know what would, what it might look like in '26. So the way we would be thinking about it though, is the tiers of reductions covered up through five tiers, and with those reductions, we got up to about 4.5 million. What we would do is go back to those tiers and see what was not reduced, and possibly include that in FY '26. And then if we still need to reduce more beyond that, which I suspect we would, we categories, more administrative, more administration or leadership staffing, more support and instructional staff. Possibly in, more in the instructional materials, it depends on how much we can chip away at that as well. One note is, in the original tiers, we had a school closure at the last year, like the, the last step. I, I've taken it off the table for FY '25. I don't know if we will, if it would be on the table for FY '26. That's still, that's a lingering question. And these are just overall levels of impact. Again, you're looking at a systemic impact.
Great. Thank you. About presentation, I'd like to open it up now.
I have two more slides.
Oh, two more slides? Excuse me, Patrice has more.
Sorry, this is to close out the presentation. We leave this as history of the past and failed overrides of the past 30 years?
It's prop two and a half.
Yeah, since 1990.
Yeah.
Prop two and a half, thank you. What's interesting to note is, based on the conversations before, this will be the highest override the town has requested since.
Five fails, four, four yeses.
And then next steps. So on January 8th, I mentioned in my remarks, the board as an E will be discussing the override, the no override planning at that meeting. January 18th is a public forum on transitioning the assessors from elected to appointed. On January 19th, a budget, which is a record budget by my town administrator superintendent, that will be printed and sent out. January 22nd, we have a special town meeting for the transition, transition of assessors at the, for the annual election. 24th, the governor's budget is released. January 25th will be budget summit number four. That'll be the, traditionally what is the annual budget presentation for the no override and the override budget by myself and superintendent. And then finally, finally, January 30th, the board will be meeting to hopefully make a final determination of the override amount for the April second election. So that's where we are looking at the new year.
Right. So this was, as Meg indicated, nobody is happy about this, but this is necessary planning because there is no assurance that a no override will be successful, but this clearly presents a very dark picture for town services, town and school services across the board. But just to make sure we understand where this is all coming from, because it was a lot of information presented. Patrice, I wondered if you could go back, I think it's your slide two or three. Go up, back up, reach you. Go up one more. Maybe I'll split my comments across, across both slides. So at a high up level, I think people just should remember where this is all coming from. The, we have clearly a fiscal '24 budget, but a lot of that fiscal '24 budget was made possible by use of free cash and ARPA money that's not going to be available in fiscal '25. So if you take the, the recurring revenue, which is, you know, property tax, and then the other categories of recurring revenue. So the property tax grows at two and a half percent, and there's new growth, and there's local receipts and all of that. When you roll that forward to fiscal '25, you don't even get to current spending levels. You're, you're, in fiscal '25, if you roll forward your recurring revenue, you're actually, in fiscal '25, you will be below fiscal '24 because those one-time monies from fiscal '24 appear. So to try to mitigate that, we all recognize that we have what we've been calling excess free cash, and we're going to utilize that. So as the slide shows, the starting point for fiscal '25 is 11.8 million in certified free cash. That's the number we got a couple of weeks ago. The number in the bottom row, which is roughly 4 million or a little over 4 million, is the amount that we are committed by our financial policies to keep, really as in the bank. We don't, we're not going to go into that. That means then between the 4 million and the 11 million, there's roughly $6 million. That is going to be utilized over a two-year horizon. In this no override scenario, we have a different proposal for the override that I'm not going to repeat because it'll just confuse everybody. But since we're now talking about a no override scenario, the excess free cash of roughly, roughly 7 million, is actually going to be drawn down in a planned way for fiscal '25 and fiscal '26. And it's going to be distributed so that some of it goes into the general fund, where it gets allocated between town side functions and school side functions. And some of it's going to be earmarked capital spending. But the key point is that, under this, as it's been laid out here, and the implications that are made more specific in the next slide, by the end of fiscal '26, the excess free cash is expected to be gone, will be down to the reserve level, which means that we're going to have another dire situation in fiscal '27. But what I want to make clear is that we are drawing upon reserves to mitigate the effects of a failed override, but that mitigation is going to be relatively modest. And that strategy will be fully played out by fiscal '26. There won't be any excess free cash to, barring some miracle, but you can't count on a miracle, there, there won't be any more excess free cash to draw upon. And the print's a little small, but this slide, just to repeat, even though prop two and a half revenues go up by two and a half percent, and there are other categories of revenue growth, such that the recurring revenue growth is more like three or three and a half percent, the role of the one-time monies in fiscal '24 is so large that when you take that away, which kind of deflates everything, in fiscal uh, which kind of deflates everything in fiscal twenty five, you're only looking at a, a one point four percent increase in your spending. When we know that the expenses of maintaining the services that we're currently providing are growing much more than one point four percent. So that, that is what is the, the, the box that we're in that's leading to the reductions that were outlined for both the town's, town budgets and school budgets. Uh, so just maybe everybody was following all of that during the presentations, but just for the, everybody's benefit, including those who are attending remotely from the public, I just wanted to recap how we got to where we are today.
Roy, can I ask a question about that slide too, just to make sure I understand? Is the three million one two nine in the override offset? Is that the reserve that will be carried forward into cover fiscal year twenty six? Should there be no override?
It will load a free, it will be part of our free cash certification for twenty six.
Whatever. So we're calling it total uses of seven, seven, but we're really, the total uses in the fiscal year twenty five budget is the seven, seven minus the three, one, twenty nine.
Can't follow. We need to roll up the, roll up the slide, please, because now we're confused.
Jack, one, one thing that was not mentioned here is that this budget is predicated on a recurring use of three million of free cash.
Understood.
And I, I.
That revenue will be in fiscal year twenty five's revenue and, and that's the operating budget OPEB number, right?
The five fifty two?
The three million is the combination of the operating budget and OPEB.
Four plus the, the five hundred thousand.
So that's what you're. That's the three million recurring.
Yep, right.
And then there's an additional three point one million that is recommended to be used.
In.
And twenty five.
In twenty.
Read the, read the notes, they are proposal to set aside portion of current free cash to offset requested override. And then one, five goes into the capital stabilization fund. So you're, you're using seven point seven, Jack, and you're rolling over. If you scroll up just a hair.
So that seven, seven is in the budget. I, so where is the discipline about saving some of that eleven for the next year?
Jack, if you follow, there's four point one, three, eight, zero, seven, eight that rolls over into twenty six. That's the remaining amount.
Right, because you'll, you'll decimate the, the reserve number.
Violate the policy.
No, no, this, this is an additional.
Could I, could I just clarify? So I think.
It's not that confusing.
This chart is being used for the override budget and the no override budget. The, the three point one two nine is, would be put into this. In the event that the override passes, we put it into an override mitigation fund.
Right.
That would be available to use in FY twenty six and FY twenty seven.
Yep.
So would the one point five would conceivably be put into a capital stabilization fund to then be available to, for a future capital need. But in the event that the override does not pass, those, though, both of those funding streams would be repurposed to help offset any adjustments to the override, to the, to the cuts.
To the expenses in fiscal year twenty five. It'll be spent instantaneously.
They would be added to the FY twenty five budget. The three million would be added to the FY twenty five budget and conceivably the one point five million, instead of being put into a capital stabilization fund, would be put into another fund that would be reserved for use, for the FY twenty six budget.
So then I'm just.
That's a key distinction. If I could, I could echo that.
We confuse everybody.
We have, looks like we confuse them.
We confuse everybody.
Uh, Chris.
Might be handy to have this chart have an additional column that had FY twenty six.
Yeah.
That would be a handy addition to this chart. I would submit it actually is a little bit, the risk of being contradicted. So a, a column that had FY twenty six would be handy because I actually was not assuming that the one point one five disappeared from capital stabilization. I was assuming it came from the balance at the bottom. So um, maybe in the next version, we add FY twenty six.
Can I ask you?
Sure.
Jennifer, the two, four, four, seven. Two on the lines, two and three, that's going to get spent. The intent is for that to be spent in twenty five regardless of an override.
Absolutely.
If there's an override that passes, the three, one, two, nine and the one point five will be set aside for future purposes for future years. To be determined at that time, how they're used.
Mm-hmm.
If, and I believe what you're saying is if the override fails, the one, five and the three, one, two, nine will fall into the twenty five. Expect, will be available for twenty five expenditures. Is that right? And then the, or one, three, eight will be carried over as our base number for uh
One, five.
Free cash, sort of the, the, the floor on free cash.
Everything you said is correct, except that instead of the one point five being spent immediately, the intent is for the one point five to be held for reserve for FY twenty six.
So if the override does not pass, we're going to, we're going to spend three, six point one, two, nine in twenty five. Right, the three million up top plus the three, one, two, nine.
Yes.
So if the override passes, we spend three million in, in free cash. If the override fails, we spend six million in free cash.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And we don't repair the general report.
Right.
That's still, I, I'm puzzled by Roy's comment earlier than that in it, we're doing this in a disciplined way to also save free cash for fiscal year twenty six, because it doesn't seem like, it, it seems like we're exhausting it down to the minimum threshold of what our reserve policy is.
Well, it's the choice not to use the one point five for capital in FY twenty five. The one point five that's earmarked here in FY twenty five for the capital stabilization in the event of a failed override would no longer be earmarked for capital, would be earmarked for FY twenty six uh mitigation, free cash to mitigate the impact. That's, or at least that's what you've laid out here, right, Jennifer?
Yeah.
He, I, I.
Can I ask?
Sorry, go ahead.
The clarifying question then, oh, the math went away, darn it. So of the two pink columns, would it make sense if you were to redo this chart? Okay, so if the override fails, three point one, two, nine, four, three, nine gets spent in FY twenty five. And the one point five is reserved to offset in FY twenty six, correct?
So if you look at the next slide, what that indicates is what funding sources are available in the no override budget that we're putting together.
Right.
We're budgeting two for the no override in twenty twenty five, thirty two point five, nine million. That includes three million dollars of recurring free cash and three point one million dollars of the remaining free cash.
Right, can you go back to the other one though? Because just to Jack's point, what I was going to say was I think in theory then the remaining balance of free cash would, in theory, in the failed override, have that one point five in it, would it not?
No, because the absolute, what we should be doing is actually setting it aside as town.
Keeping it out of the free cash.
Not want it to roll forward and.
Okay.
Like the number of the override, the.
Okay. I do think an FY twenty six column would make this.
Yeah.
I think realistically, this chart was meant to, to reflect something entirely different. So I think what we should do is completely start over and, and have a.
I wasn't saying that, but sorry, you know, we can't win a lot.
I think what's important here is to, here to clarify the question, no, one more, go, go to the, going the other way for it down. Further down, please.
And yellow there.
Right here, where you say fiscal twenty five, no override, thirty two million point five nine available for municipal. This is after this, you know, the um, or sort of expenses are, are funded, right? This is thirty two million for municipal and, which is one point three, seven percent increase, forty, forty-four thousand dollars, whatever, whatever that is. And um, or is that four hundred and forty thousand? What is that number? Point four, four, four hundred and forty, forty seven. And then for schools, sixty three point seven five, which is what Dr. Geiser just went through in terms of her reductions. Eight hundred and sixty thousand increase, so one point three, seven percent. The two together is two point um, seven, whatever it is, two point seven percent increase for those two amounts. You have to combine the two.
Correct.
Do those amounts, this thirty two and the sixty three include not only the three million, but also the three point one million?
That's right.
That's the, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So there isn't one, three million, one, twenty nine that rolls over to twenty five. It's used in a no override scenario.
Right.
That's right.
Understood.
That's a good.
Twenty five.
Clarify on questions, which, which then suggests that the only thing that's available in a no override scenario is the, the amount that we have committed under our pre, pre cash guidelines, if you will. And the one point five in capital staff and also there's amounts in, in general staff.
So you'd have to transfer the one, five from the capitalization stabilization fund into the operating budget, which.
Well, it's a consideration, Jack.
Meeting, I assume?
It's not yet allocated. It's not yet allocated. It's not yet.
Not yet been appropriated.
Intended.
Able free cash earmarked potentially do that. In the event of a failed override, that would not happen. Instead, go to another.
Right, that's the point.
For FY twenty.
And that gets to Jennifer's, this chart wasn't intended to reflect, right?
Let me just re, try to repeat what I hope is a simple point without getting uh immersed in the details of these tables. We, we, we have a known amount of excess free cash today. And the intent of the no override budget is to exhaust the, is to exhaust the excess free cash by the end of fiscal twenty six.
That's right.
And exactly how that's done is getting lost in the weeds here. But the, there will not be any more, the, the, the plan here is to not have any more excess free cash in two years.
This is, this is us deploying the airbags.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Twelve, almost twelve million and we deploy the first airbag of three point one and the next airbag is one point five million and then we're done.
Yes. You're exactly right, Matt. Uh, Jamal?
Um, just gonna switch the conversation for a second around the fiscal year twenty six. So um, what is, given that, given that we have a number on these slides for what we expect the schools and town to be, what the revenue is available for the school and town fiscal year twenty six, what is the actual deficit that we anticipated fiscal year twenty six? Assuming a one and a half million reuse from the capital to plug that gap. What is, what is, what is that? Is that three million, four million, one million?
I don't understand the question.
I don't either.
In fiscal year twenty six, there's a deficit, going to be a deficit, right? Right. What's the deficit relative to the amount that will be, how much are we going to need to cut from the school and the town is the question.
It kind of depends on the starting, starting point.
Correct.
And, and also is, as Dr. Geiser noted, you know, it's, it, any adjustments that we make in FY twenty five, make an adjustment for the, for where we need to, to make further adjustments for FY twenty six. So it's a, it's a moving target a little bit.
So Tom, what is, what is the, what does your, the model say?
I'll, I'll echo actually Jennifer's point. It's really about what you use as your FY twenty five baseline to determine what your twenty six number is to compute that deficit. So if we took existing FY twenty five projections that we had previously and we rolled them forward with historical growth rates, that's a nine million dollar deficit. But that wouldn't be what we would be working with. We would be working with a lower deficit because you'd be growing off of a lower FY twenty five base. And I can compute that, I can't compute it on the phone. I'm happy to do it though.
So just to clarify, you would take the proposed FTE cuts, proposed service cuts and plug those in and make a new FY twenty five base and then project out twenty six through seventy.
Right, I mean, you could pick whatever growth numbers you wanted, but you could use just the sort of growth you, you use previously, see where you end up and then you can look at what your deficit.
You need, you need to put these scenarios into the model.
To, I, on the table on page three.
There'll be just a microphone there.
I did the thing I didn't want to do. I made it happen. I'm sorry. I almost made it better and then I missed it.
On the ground too and front.
Get that on camera?
Yeah.
Kill the flow.
So the, the table on page three, the sixty three point seven five, oh, excuse me, uh, they're not added. Thirty two, fifty nine and the sixty three, seventy five for municipal and schools. That ties to the table on page two. The dollar amounts actually go up slightly and they'd go up by a million five more than what's shown on a million, on this table as we talked about. So in dollars, the dollars go up. The problem is that the expense growth rate is faster than that, so there is a shortfall. It, it, it's not a reduction in revenue, it's just a, an increase in revenue at point eight percent. That is well shy of what our expense growth rate is.
You'd have to find that difference in the budget.
Yes. That's what we presented this evening.
Okay, so just, let me try to state this one more time or a different way. The, the proposed budgets with the various cuts that have been discussed lead to thirty two point five nine municipal and fiscal twenty five and sixty three point seven five on the school side. So if we then move on to fiscal twenty six, where the, let's start with the municipal side, it's shown as thirty two point eight six, which is a microscopic increase. It's from thirty two point five nine to thirty two point eight six. What, what is the assumption that limits the expenditure to such a tiny increase? It's just.
Sorry, we're going to pull up the no override um allocation by delocation that we presented to the board and the.
Well, I think, Roy, there's, there's two things that you actually already mentioned, which is we've been bolstering our numbers with expenditures of free cash and our expenditures are going down each year. So that's why the growth rate looks so small is because each year we're spending less free cash.
And that's, the, these numbers are the available revenue that you have to meet, you have to align your expenses with. And the reason it's only going up zero point eight three is recurring revenue is probably going up three point two or whatever. But you're using, you have a lot less free cash in fiscal year twenty six to use. So the total revenue can only grow at less than a percent.
Nation for other services, you're correct.
Right, because instead of having three point one in, in the free cash supplement, you only have one and a half. So you, you've lost two million dollars almost off the top.
Precisely why there was the concern last year about how much free cash, because we all know it's not sustainable. So we, we had a crisis situation last year. We plugged it with a big infusion of free cash, but that means it's no longer available.
Let me make some comments, Chris. Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to thank both Patrice and Jennifer and our finance team and also Dr. Geiser, you and administration and school committee for rather very thoughtful, detailed analysis that's been presented here. And you know, clearly it's been said already, these are dramatic reductions on school side and municipal side. It will have enormously adverse impact on our residents. And, and the other thing that, that, you know, as I was listening, Dr. Geiser to you and to our town administrator is frankly, we're not really even delivering level services today. So it even suggests that this is a, we're going from level services down to a, a no override budget suggests that we're going to below level services to a no override budget. I mean, that's the sense I'm getting on both, because clearly on the, on the municipal side, we haven't added back the reductions we took in twenty one. So we, as a board, have always felt that we, we're not delivering frankly, level services or the services that our residents expect. So you know, I think our residents need to understand that we're not even delivering the, the level of services you expect. Frankly, we're not even delivering services at a level, at a, at a service that is considered a level, if you will. Um, I had a, just a couple of questions, Dr. Geiser, for you. And you know, it's helpful to go through all of these really thoughtful um scenarios, presumably desperate presented to the school committee. But nothing's been voted on between scenario one and two at this point.
Correct.
And just at a top level, it seems to be a choice, a good choice, between whether we fund extracurricular activities or instruction. I mean, if I look at the numbers and how they rolled out to get to your reductions, it's a choice between reducing sports and extracurricular activities, arts and some, you know, and music and all of that. You know, I don't think we need to detail right now, but that's a, one, one choice versus do we reduce classroom instruction and increase class sizes.
Yes.
And neither one is, neither one is, neither one is a good choice.
Well, and that's why the, that's why I'm going to be bringing a one scenario. What that helped us do is to, so we were sort of up here with the whole tiered structure, right? So what this helped us to do is just start to narrow it down a little bit. And then the next step is to bring a one scenario that probably crosses between the scenario, the two scenarios. Rather, does that make sense? So it's sort of.
Yeah, so blending it in terms of reduction from both, but this is just two scenarios that have been outlined.
Yeah.
One, one additional question in budget. One, one additional question and budget summit, one or in our two or in the memo that you wrote as well, there was an additional amount beyond this level service number, right? I mean, there was an override, there was a.
In the override.
Yeah, an override amount. So how much more was that beyond the sixty six million only?
Sixty seven something.
No, I think he's discussing the five hundred. So we had the level services.
Okay.
Then there was additional add to that, about a million or something.
About one point three million was the one.
That, that hasn't been presented here, but so, so I'm going to assume our override will be successful and, but we have a lot of work to do. And if we pull it together, I think it can be successful. I really do believe that to be the case. Is that something that the schools will continue to consider as something that's needed?
You mean in what we presented in that override? Yes.
Okay, I just want clarity on that.
So I think what we would need, because obviously with the override number, there may need to be some prioritizing with that FY twenty five list. So.
Understood.
Do you know what I mean?
Understood, yeah.
Like, we don't know yet what.
And clearly on the municipal side, there are a number of things that we've always talked about needing to do that we can't do and haven't done. And so I certainly want to think about that as well. And just finally, I know there are other questions. I, I think if we work together collectively here and continue to inform our residents and our community, I think we will be successful. I think if we have a unified message, and I think we're coalescing around that, and certainly the board will bust them out sometime in January. I think if we work together and collaborate, we will convince our residents and our taxpayers that this is needed. Because if not, it's so incredibly damaging to the services that we deliver to our residents now. Thank you. Jamal?
Can I get some clarity about the sixty four point two nine million for fiscal year twenty six? Where is that number coming from?
The revenue rate.
So what Jennifer is gonna go through is the revenue allocation that we presented to the warrant committee and the select board. It shows how we're getting to the numbers we're getting to.
Okay, I guess, I guess what I, what I was trying to ask before relates to this. Because basically, do I understand correctly that in a case of no override, what we're targeting for this school is sixty three point seven five million. But for fiscal year twenty six, we're, we're targeting sixty four point twenty nine point twenty nine.
That's right.
So only half a million. When you think about the growth rate, there's no, no, you can't expect a growth rate less than four percent for a school. So a, a growth rate, even if it was four percent, you're talking about a two point two million dollars, two point four, two point five million dollars that need to cut from the school alone. So it's true that we don't know exact number, but we know it's gonna be more than, more than five hundred thousand. We know it's gonna be more than a million. We know it's gonna be more than two million. And that is, that is really important for the public to really understand that. And the reason I bring this up is that, as we said last time, when, when the school department worked through the cuts up to three and a half million, they struggled to cut anything above the three and a half million. So with the two and a half million that is being, or two point, whatever the number is, two point seven million that we'll be cutting, what we're talking between extracurricular instructions, anything above that with an additional two point four to three million dollars, it's not small pieces. It is, it is really structurally different school that we're talking about. And I feel like we're dancing around this topic a little bit. And I just want to make sure that I name it. It's a huge number that we're talking about this period twenty six. And there has to be a strategy for a no override so that we are not in a place where we have a no override. We have no, no, no way to rescue that in fiscal year twenty six.
Yeah, so Jamal, everybody's always, twenty five was gonna be bad and twenty six is going to be worse. I, I think you're, you're right. Nobody's, nobody's assumed anything otherwise because twenty five, we sort of, it's, it's a slow fall instead of a crash off a cliff in twenty five. So it's bad in twenty five, it's worse in twenty six. And that's true on the town side as well as the school side. There is no way in a no override scenario to avoid a really bad outcome. That, that's just the reality. There's not enough money. So it's bad in twenty five and it's worse in twenty six. And I, I think that's just the reality of an override.
So I guess the question becomes, what is the plan for a no override? What is the plan for the, should the override not pass in April?
Literally this. You look at a bad twenty five and a worse twenty six. What we're doing, this is the exercise.
Apologize, I guess what I was, I should have asked it differently. What I, what I'm sure to be asking is, is the plan to put the override on the ballot again in next, next year or the following year?
I don't think we know that yet.
Well, I think clearly an override is needed. I think everybody in this room believes an override is needed in April. And we're, we'd like to proceed on that basis. This is all kind of a, a giant backup emergency plan. If an override is not successful in April, it still means that an override is necessary. The question is when? And I think the answer to that really has to await what happens in April. Because, and really we're getting ahead of ourselves. But I think the choices are sometime certainly no later than fiscal twenty six because we have really no recourse for fiscal twenty seven at this point to avoid a complete implosion. But I, I think we have to start strategizing in the event the override is not successful in April, when exactly we go back? Because it's gonna depend a lot on, yeah, I'm reluctant even to speculate on what factors we would take into consideration. But it's, it's clearly, an override is clearly necessary. And I think the first priority of the select board, if an override failed in April, is to start thinking about when to come back to the voters. Because the one thing that would be, I think, even worse is having two failed overrides in succession, particularly in close succession. If it, if it doesn't work out in April, it's gonna take a ton of thought.
Ask a, a related question. An override fails in April, the hole for the next override is deeper. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Right, just as the, in general, the principle is that if the override in April fails, the need for twenty six doesn't somehow become smaller. We might have to, we'll be cutting things and that will, that will depend on all the cutting and the models as Tom was saying, but like, right? It will depend on the base for FY twenty five. But like, it's not like we suddenly need less money to do the same things. I don't know. So yeah, I mean, you're trying to clarify.
Yeah, for two, for two reasons on a lot of things. What do I speak to? You're exactly right, for, for two reasons. One, at that point, you fully exhausted the excess free cash or the mitigation free cash that we were using to make the first override smaller. So that's been used to try to plug the holes, the urgent holes. So that's not available to mitigate. And two, while we will try to certainly curtail, you know, growth, there continues to be the challenges of growth of expense lines greater than revenue lines. Now, we're gonna jam them together for a couple of years, but you still haven't fundamentally shifted the curve. So in those out years, you're again looking at a sort of a bigger override than you were, a bigger deficit than you were sort of previous year.
I think the other thing is, even if the board decided to go out to another override, you still have to implement some of the cuts that we've talked about this.
Of course.
Because it's not a guarantee.
No question. Sorry, Amy, Amy, check with, they haven't spoken yet.
Thank you. Yeah, I think just listening to both of the presentations and thank you for everyone's time putting those together. I, I think I was thinking about two different things that are related. One is just, it feels that we are already as a community, both in terms of school department and the non-school departments, working on a very fragile foundation with some probably cracks in it again that have accumulated. And, and I know that all of our, all of our staff and employees are doing so much with, with so little resources available. And again, the override scenario puts forward some small, modest ways to both close some of those cracks and, and invest, I think, in the future in ways that will actually help financially, but also provide additional services to residents. I think the second thing that, just speaking as a, as a, a parent in this community that I kept thinking about in terms of the school department reductions was seeing my own kids in those, in those reductions and what those would have meant had my kids, or should they go through the school system without, without those supports academically, without opportunities athletically. And I, I know that many people in this room have their own, you know, story and perspective on that. And I believe that, you know, we live in a community that, that values and wants excellent education. That has been the case for years. I'm also hopeful and appreciative of, of town leadership for supporting an override that hopefully includes both, again, necessary resources to help close some of those cracks, but also to start to build, you know, I, I think a future that, that folks are expecting. And, and that looks like, again, core educational services. That looks like having athletic opportunities for our kids. That looks like having special education supports that are better than they are today. And that also looks like services that are not on the school side, which I know I sit here as a school committee member, but which I really know that many of our residents want and expect. So I just, I, I, it just perhaps echoes some of the comments. And I think that really sharing sort of the story of what this means, what the numbers in these grids mean in the coming months is going to be of critical importance. And I am confident that our community will support an override. Thank you.
Right, Chris, Chris Doyle.
Chris, you may have to come closer, but microphone is not near you.
I can speak loudly, it's okay. So I have sort of a communicate, I guess, a communication point, which is, it actually builds a little bit of what Amy was saying, but it's maybe a variation, which I would suggest that we have, and maybe this required like someone from the select board working with the staff and somebody from the school administration. Because I, I fully recognize that everything that was developed here was a massive amount of work for the staff on both sides to develop. But I think there are two communication things. One is understandably, a lot of what's described in these cuts is, is in sort of budget line item language, you know, everybody here kind of mostly understands, you know, this FTE, this line. It was, I'm struck on it on both sides, the town side and on the school side. But it doesn't really translate into, if you're a student in a school that looks like this or you're an employee who works in the school and you probably have, it has to slide to sort of like an average, some version of app. The way that we do our property tax bills, which I'm gonna bring that up in a second, but an average person with an average value. But, but so an average student, what does that mean? That means they go through the day in the high school with classes that are probably, I don't, I'm guessing thirty five people. They have few of these choices. They don't have athletic, you know, just an average person. And then an employee working in the school, I don't know, means they don't have like extra training. They don't have any supplies. They're like putting on a hat to collect. But I think it's important to translate the line items into what it means for someone. And the same thing on the town side, right? For a town employee, what does it mean to have that budget? And for a town resident, what does it mean? And it, and then likewise, I think it also, you need to have like the average person living in town who say has two kids in the school district, just like we do with a, with a bill for the tax. You know, somebody has a house and it's worth X dollars amount. When, when we do these overrides, we say, oh, that means that the average taxpayer in Belmont will pay this much more. Okay, so under this scenario, the average parent in the, in the town who has two kids in school, now they're gonna pay X for this and Y for that. So that's on top of, you know, there's no override, but this is what they're paying. So people, and then the same thing, a resident, which is someone without people in school. And then a resident who also has people in school, so you're paying for all these fee for services that are being outlined. So sort of translate the line items into what it means for the constituent, you know, the, both the student and the employee and then the resident and the employee on the town side. I think it's really important to make that next leap. The reason I'm bringing that up to say something from the select board and from the school committees is because I recognize that's a lot of work. And so I'm just, and I know that what staff has already done is a massive amount of work. That's the next step.
Well, maybe I'd ask Patrice to take a stab at describing this on the town side.
So for the town perspective, it's, it's not, it's December twentieth. And the last week I've had to inform department heads to inform their staff that they might not have a job. That is one of the hardest things to do in my position. So to put this out in a line by line, I felt that it was respectful and given the time of year to hold back and wait to have those discussions a little bit more finite as we get along this process. It, it had to do with more of a cognitive decision that we can, we can discuss the impacts of what it means. But given where we are in this, in this time period in the calendar, I felt it best to just keep it at a higher level. And then we'll dig down as we get into a little further. So that's, that's why it's, it's.
I'm not being critical.
No, 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 I know. I'm just explaining why it, it's not the way it is because it could have been that way. But we decided unconsciously not to put it out that way.
Well, Matt?
Yeah, just one thing I've been thinking about, is I think implied by this no override is it's gonna really hamper our ability to modernize our town in a lot of the medium to long-term ways that we've been talking about. And I hear people generally agree on, whether it's what Elizabeth Dionne and the whole select board have been advocating for in terms of business development. And we need time to have zoning and planning and engineering and community discussions around that stuff. And I look at this, not just the staffing cuts, but our current level of staffing. If we do call it level service on the town side, it seems to really hamper our ability to execute on those things that will determine the multi-decade future of our town. This is, we really have to pass this.
Can I, can I speak to that? Because Matt, that's exactly what I was, was thinking about. And I want to step back and say, first of all, thanks to the staff on the town, the school side for, typical budget season is one budget, they've had to prepare three. They've had to prepare level services, they've had to prepare, you know, an aspirational budget and then a no override budget. So that's, that's three budgets. And the reason that I raise this is I, you know, we, we hear a lot from people who are disgruntled that, that the town or the school potentially is not acting as quickly as they would like on certain things. And I've, I've had to point out, they are working around the clock right now. So thank you to everybody for all the work that you've done. And please be patient and understand the, the really crushing workload that, that staff are under on, on both sides of this budget. Second thing is, we all know, for whatever reason, Belmont opted not to take steps five, 10, 15 years ago that would have put us in a different financial situation. And what this budget discussion does not include is enhancement of revenues outside of an ask on, on taxpayers. The reality is, we are deeply committed. And, and I agree, there, there is, there is agreement across the ideological spectrum in the town as to where we need to go and what we need to do in terms of being more business friendly. Switching from a ninety five, five residential, commercial property tax base to something that could actually fund. You know, we like to look at our peer communities in terms of what we don't spend versus what they do spend. But what we don't compare is what they collect versus what we don't collect because they made a different set of decisions. And so we are responsible for where we are. But the reality is that we need a bridge. We're gonna have to ask the voters for a bridge. We are committed to, first of all, doing a market analysis so that we know what is the type of rezoning and development that will give us the biggest bang for our buck. So that is something that the select board will be addressing hopefully the end of next month. At that point, and the planning board's fully on board with this, as are a number of other committees, we are looking at a rewrite of our zoning bylaw and a master plan that hopefully gets us to another place. But I would be lying if I said any of that would be realized before three years. We will be doing really well in three years to have the whole plan solidified. And it's gonna take time beyond that. And so the request, part of what this request is of voters is that we need to earn their trust that we actually are gonna execute, we have a plan that we'll execute on it and that eventually it will achieve results, but it's not going to happen quickly. And, and if we don't have a bridge, then we do impair our ability. In particular, I am devoted to a robust planning department. And a robust planning department that can help recruit businesses and build the town that we want. Just as others are recruited to other robust departments. We really are, and I think this is part of the communication, we are asking the voters for a bridge, for a lifeline. So, so that we can realize and then execute on this vision. But also I think that gives them hope. But there is a plan. The plan is not simply to keep coming back year after year after year in desperation. But hopefully there will come a point where there is a whole, a little more money that's coming, not just from homeowners.
Sorry, let's go online for a moment. Jeff Liberty, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Roy. I really appreciate the spirit of what you just shared, Elizabeth. I, I said something similar in a recent meeting and I think it's something that everybody continues to need to hear from us. I, I also just want to ask if all of our information about tax relief or deferment is gonna be readily available or now or at the time when it comes to vote? Because I think that everybody votes individually as a family or as an individual. And so just so knowing what, what. And so just knowing what ones, options are, if you're a senior or if you are in a tax, in a cash-strapped position and not really able to pay the additional taxes that would be required of you if the override passes. I just hope that all that information is readily available at the same time as the ask, because I think that would motivate people to support something if they knew they didn't have to pay everything right away, if they could pay later, et cetera. So I'm just curious about where that stands.
So we've talked to, actually, we talked to Aaron about things that are happening at the state level in regards to then the senior work-off program. We're hoping to bring that forward in the spring. So I know there's some other initiatives that are out there that we're looking at and we're hoping to.
So Patrice, just to crystal up your answer, do you think that will all be available and ready to go and to talk about before April?
Before April, most likely not. It would definitely be a placeholder on the warrant by then if there's anything that town meeting needs to do to approve.
But it's a function of what programs, what different programs are available at the state level. The, I think the reality is that the the tax deferral and senior tax write-off or credit schemes that are in existence are well explained on the assessor's website. The basic problem is that as these programs currently exist, which is largely a result of legislation at the state level, not very many people are eligible for them. And the number of people who take advantage, say, of the senior tax deferral program right now is quite small.
Under 15.
I had had a, just to get ahead of myself again, I had had a proposal for a different approach to senior tax relief that I was hoping to work out with the assessor. But after four years, no progress was made, unfortunately. But I'm hoping that will change in the next year.
I think one of the things that we need to message about the January 22 special town meeting that's devoted exclusively to switching from elected to an appointed board of assessors is, it is senior tax relief that is finally driving that. There are other factors as well. It's pilot, but the inability to move senior tax relief forward was the final straw. And it doesn't solve the problem, but it does signal in a very real, incredible way that this is something we're aware of, we're concerned about. And we've gone to the final solution that we have to go to to actually do something actionable.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment. I'm, as Patrice mentioned, I'm planning to work with the town to try to bring some new tax relief measures forward. But except for from that, I.
I didn't understand what you just said.
Oh, sorry, I have my mask on. I'm trying to bring new measures to town. There's local options and statutes that Jennifer brought to our attention, as well as a couple other programs that I'm hoping we can add to what we have. That said, I respectfully disagree that the town website currently lists and explains the existing programs with any clarity. They're not all listed in one place. The applications are difficult to find. Some of them you just have to call, some of them you have to email. So I would suggest that streamlining or at least capturing all that information and putting into a single document or single webpage, as some of our neighboring towns have done, would be really helpful for people. And it would be great just to direct them to. I'm happy to try to help. It's just, I usually have to call you guys. I'm trying to, I know you have a lot going on. As you know, I have something in my phone. Thanks. Thank you.
Oh, John.
Hi, John, you're a school committee. First of all, I want to express my appreciation for the select board already voicing a support for a substantial override for the entire town. I think it is important for us to be in agreement and work together to get that way. I have two thoughts. One is very on topic for this meeting, which is on the non-override perspective, where Mark was asking about what is the difference between a scenario? But in reality, we are not choosing between extracurricular or curricular. We are already reducing the curriculum support significantly. It's the level of curriculum reduction, additional curriculum reduction weighing against non-curricular reduction in terms of the cuts that we are making. And I think, and then the second part in the same phase is that similar to the town, we are looking at a 26 level, like Elizabeth said, that is really drastic. So that in the case of a non-override, what we are likely to see is a more complete restructuring of the school district. Two, that is not going to be what we're seeing now. One, they are out of district placement, which is mandated services. There are no way to reduce that. And in the sense we're providing less support, we are likely to see higher support, which results in more reduction in regular services. And secondly, we are likely going to have to see things that make changes to the entire structure, such as maybe see the high schools go down in terms of the classes they can take. Instead of six and a half that they take now, maybe it's down to five and a half. Or go to a four-day school week. Or, I mean, things that we can't imagine here or Massachusetts won't allow that others already doing. It is kind of scary.
Yeah, we haven't discussed any of those as.
No, we did. It's personal opinion, entirely personal, not from, you know, we have not discussed any of it, but it is. Then in terms of talking about the override budget, Mark, you asked, in terms of the budget that we have proposed, how much of that is still needed, what we consider to be needed? I believe that Dr. Geiza had provided a modest, deliberate and methodical plan for three-year bridge to the future, just like what we're trying to do with the town, that has not saying on the override, we're going to spend everything in the first year, but planning to rebuild our school program, to enhance our special education program with the intention of reducing our district cost. But we cannot project a saving until the plan is in place. So similar to a town that we cannot project any revenue until the plan is in place, we are asking the town for a bridge. So, you know, as much as that substantial override can be, it will help our process to save money and not spend all in '25, but have additional powder to spend on investment in '26 and '27 when the really exciting things are happening. And lastly, looking at the last slide that Patrice has provided for the failed override, it seems like the bigger we go after a failed right, the more likely that we're going to pass. And hopefully, if we fail, then we're going back in November with a much bigger one, because the town will need it and more people will have to think that it's necessary.
Thank you, John.
All right, any other comments from the assembled committees?
I have just a whole small questions. I can either take them offline or I'm happy to ask them now. They may be helpful others.
Well, their general interest, you should ask her.
I was just curious. I noticed in the town side presentation, you noted some savings in the benefits, which I assume comes out of the shared services budget. Am I right in assuming that there would be some similar reductions based on the FTEs cut out of the school budget that are, that we, in the same way? Is that right?
It would affect.
The benefits, yeah. So that would, but it's tens of thousands of dollars, not hundreds, right? Or maybe, maybe low hundreds.
I don't think it's that much.
It's not, yeah, but it's not, not a game changer. But just curious to know that it.
We're going to change.
A little nudge in there for a tiny, okay.
But then you have to also remember there's a flip side to that, which is unemployment.
Right, of course. Probably all. Patrice, I was just wondering specifically, you have a, you mentioned in the past in our strategies that we have found efficiencies. And I'm curious, in the past, you've described that as a strategy of attrition, where we don't refill positions when people leave. Is that included in the number of FTEs that have already been cut since 2021? Do you have, I think, 5.5?
No, so we.
Is that a separate?
Totally separate. So again, it's my philosophy when there's some turnover in a department, it's the time to look at the department to see what's needed and what you can potentially do for efficiency. And that usually translates to savings. But then you kind of close to the next year and then you don't kind of, you don't see it, because you've already captured it.
Right.
So to be specific, with the change in the treasurer's office, we've reduced the FTE. The headcount treasurer's office has gone down because of these very significant changes the new treasurer's made since coming in. She's streamlined, it's faster, smarter, better.
Right. But so the total reduction of FTEs splits it as 5.5, right? The actual total headcount change is more than that, am I right?
Yes.
21, just checking, okay. Great, thank you.
Could I?
Chris had her hand up.
Could I actually just ask? Tony, could you clarify if any of the projections for the FY '25 include? I know last year when we were making adjustments, we collaborated on the benefit savings from making some of those adjustments?
Yeah, so reductions in a non-override scenario for school positions include salary, salary savings, health insurance savings, offsetting costs for employment.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Water.
Related question. We're looking at FTE positions, because I know that there has been a continuing challenge in staffing on public safety side and the public on DPW side, et cetera. Can you give us an idea of these in a non-override? Are they going to be eliminating those positions? Or actually people?
That's, that's something I'm working on right now. We're looking at a complete restructure in the Department of Public Works. It involves union negotiations, but we are trying to kind of move some, move some things around, which would ultimately result in a FTE reduction. But again, it's, right now, we're just, we're still working on it.
What is that? Patrice, correct me if I'm wrong. It's not clear that those FTE reductions translate to maintaining the level of service. It's just trying to lessen the reduction in service.
Chris Doyle.
I just kind of was wondering whether or not, I know that the January 22 virtual town meeting is dedicated to the assessor question. I'm wondering if there's going to be a, like an FYI or a town report related to the budget.
We need to discuss that one.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't discussed with the moderator yet with the.
I think it's a good idea to do something like that.
Like, when Mike most recently came before us, he did say any town reports he thought would be appropriate. I think he certainly signaled his willingness.
It strikes me as, given what we're talking about here, it strikes me as prudent, but also it's a little bit of like the elephant in the room. If we get together and talk about the assessor and there's like nothing about the budget, it would seem to be a little, it would just strike as disintenuous. It was unintentional.
Well, Chris, let's just look at the calendar for a moment, because I mean, the, this January town meeting was really intended to be a very streamlined, focused, one-question kind of town meeting. In terms of other opportunities to discuss the budget, we're going to have Philly, the big one, on January 25. And, you know, we could think about another format if there would be the kind of attendance that you'd have at a town meeting. But I think the 25th would be a better setting for that than to have a 10-minute report at town meeting where there wouldn't be any discussion.
Maybe both. Make a presentation and then you could say there's this meeting where it could be discussed. It might leave more time for comments on the 25th if there were some things.
Yeah, it's a possibility. But remember, anything on the 22nd would be very short and there wouldn't be any debate, so it.
Well, this is a placeholder for at least presenting where we are today. I think Chris has got a good point. And you probably need to do more than just that. There are other things we need to consider for communicating to the.
Yeah, no, understood. It's just, I feel like it's going to feel really awkward to get together and not talk anything about the budget.
Yeah, I think, I think you should talk to the moderator about that. I think that makes abundant sense, actually, if we can do that. All right, any other comments from committee members? Otherwise, it's.
I think Jeff Lubin has his hand up.
Oh, Jeff, sorry, didn't see.
Thank you, Roy. I strongly echo Chris's comments. I think we have to address it to some degree at that meeting. And then I also think we should think about, we can take this offline, is that potentially having a forum that is actually inviting all of town meeting to meet for an educational forum with questions and answers at the high, at the high school? So something for us to talk about. But I think that is going to be key to.
Sure, yeah, I don't disagree with any of that. But remember, the, the number is going to be largely set by the end of January. And the purpose of our meeting at the very end of January is really just to formalize it. Then the real work begins of explaining it, not just the town meeting, but for the entire community.
But we will rely on town meeting members as key communicators in each of their neighborhoods and things to educate around them.
Completely agree. That's where I was going with that, is that they are the representatives of their communities and then they're going to be disseminating that information to their communities.
But there will be, I, I'm confident there will be a vigorous effort from January through to the beginning of April to explain why this is essential. Yeah.
I think, though, that attendance tonight and just in general, there is meeting fatigue in this town. And I know a lot of town meeting members who have a substantial number of other commitments as well. So to say, oh, we're not going to talk about it at town meeting on the 22nd, because they could come to the thing on the 25th. There's a lot of people who can't do both, because they don't have sitters or they don't have the ability or they don't have bandwidth or they have another meeting. So I think town meeting is your opportunity to reach the widest audience of the people who already have a base level of informedness, for lack of a better word. And those are the people you need to hit the ground running. So if you explain where you're at on January 22, they are able to hit the ground running in a much more meaningful way than to hit them with another meeting. There's, meeting fatigue is huge.
We can try. All I want to make clear is that the forum on the 22nd is going to be pretty limited in terms of available time and there won't be discussion. So people won't even really be able to ask questions about what they hear. So it's, it is what it is, I guess. All right. Any other questions from committee members? Otherwise, in our 10 minutes remaining, I take questions from the public. I see Mary Lewis behind the mask there.
I can take the mask off.
You don't have to.
Just.
We can hear you with the mask on.
Speak loudly enough so the microphone picks you up.
Right, well, my name's Mary Lewis. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 1. I want to thank everyone for the extraordinary effort that was put into putting these budgets together. And just want to underscore that because we're talking about the no override tonight, we're missing the opportunity cost, the moral cost, and the educational cost and the service cost of what we, the potential that we could have had with an override budget. Just already, as a parent at the high school, my child today had half of his classes canceled due to the fact that we don't even have a building set up. So, you know, we're already cutting into the bone and the idea that we would, you know, go to the marrow is really upsetting. So, and I know that's true on the town side, too, that Patrice has done all kinds of things to try and make the town more efficient. So have the schools. So I just wanted to underscore that, you know, we're already at a below, and I think Mark said this, a below-level services budget. And that if we don't work together, come together as a town of all generations to work toward that bridge to the future that Elizabeth was just talking about and John was just talking about, then, you know, this really won't be the same town anymore. So I just want to encourage the communication that Chris Doyle was asking us to engage in, the communication at town meeting. the communication at town meeting, I think it's an excellent idea, even if it's a 10 minute presentation of kind of a global view. And really everyone who's listening to get informed, to ask questions, to learn about the override committee, which you can do by going to investinbelmont.com. I hope that's okay that I mentioned that here. And yeah, just learn more because this is your town and you need to fight for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Right. Any other comments from the public? Please raise your Zoom hand if you would like to say something. Well, I don't see any hands.
I think we've overwhelmed some of their.
Yeah, we, we had such a great. Oh, sorry. Why am I?
Angus Abagromi, town meeting member, precinct eight. I, I've talked to a lot of people in this town. It's something I enjoy doing. And one of the overwhelming things that you hear when you are asking people to support the override is a level of distrust and apathy with, towards town staff or school staff because of experiences. And when people tell me the stories of not getting a phone call returned, I, I have to push back and say that that is because of where we are, because of the cuts that we have made over decades. And I think it is going to be really important to frame this as, as a, as a conversation about hope and a conversation about, you know, building what it's going to take to put Belmont on a fiscal path that is healthy, that is, you know, safe for our seniors and lower income people to be a part of this community and, and stable in the long term is to put this one forward and, and move in that direction. And I think the cuts demonstrated here and presented here tonight are terrifying. I mean, I, I, I went through a classroom two years ago and the changes that I'm seeing here, and that's not even well detailed for FY26. I, I am terrified for what our students are going to be going through. And I think that, that is only going to do so much. That terror, it does get people out and it does get them to vote. But what gets people to really come together in this community is hope. And so I just, I hope we can stay hopeful and I hope we can continue to, to talk about the path, the investments and where we will be in three years and five years and in 10 years if we pass this. And, you know, those are the budgets that I'm, I'm very excited to see.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well. 55.
Yeah. Mark makes, Mark makes a good. We wish everybody happy holidays. You know, I think, I think what's important though, is I said before, I, I agree with what Angus says, it's good, hope's a good thing, right? So I think that I'm hopeful because I think we have a lot of smart people around the table here. And I know that we can work together, deliver the message that's going to be delivered to the community. Successful overrides. Always. We, we do. Second, second, all in favor. So we didn't need to do that.
The warrant competing.
Warrant committee, Bob and Bluff.
Delighted.
Return in the warrant committee.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion to adjourn the capital budget, reconference of capital budget committee.
Second.
Good, join the school. Second, all in favor.
Hi.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Nice.